All set? Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 19th, 2023 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. I'll call the meeting to order and then, as usual, begin with announcements. My first announcement is a sad one, and that is acknowledging the passing of Michael Poshick. Michael dedicated himself to a number of town boards over the years. He spent a lot of time on the school committee, a lot of time on the planning board, and then he also served on the 350th Committee. That's at least in recent years. There may have been some other things he did going back a little further than that. But, you know, very sad to hear about that and very grateful for all of the time and service he gave to the town. So just want to, you know, acknowledge that and certainly send our sympathies to Ellen and Jenna, his wife and daughter. So, and then just a reminder that a week from tomorrow night, Wednesday, September 27th, will be a public forum where we will review and discuss the EMS Assessment Report that we did in conjunction with Municipal Resources. That was the name of the company?
Municipal Resources, Inc.
And so I would expect, you know, a lot of folks to come there. I hope that they do so that we can sort of talk about the state of EMS and the best way to move forward here. September 20th, so again, that's Wednesday, September 27th. That's at 6:30, and that will be held at the elementary school so that there's plenty of seating for everybody. The senior, the COA, the Hatfield Council on Aging, is hosting a health and wellness fair at the Senior Center, and that's on Monday, September 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That's always, they do such a great job with all of that. The Friends of the Hatfield Council on Aging are having their third annual fundraiser at the Black Birch Vineyard. That's on Wednesday, September 20th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that's a ticketed event.
Tomorrow.
It's tomorrow night, and you do have to get tickets for that. I think you called the Council on Aging to do that.
Yes.
I just want to remind people to check online. There's still some, you know, vacancies on various boards and committees. And so we know that there's a lot of people out there who like to lend their time to town and lend their expertise, so we would encourage you to, those vacancies are posted on the website, right, Marlene?
They are.
So take a look at what's available, and maybe there's something that interests you and you'd like to, you know, serve on that. So, backtracking just a little bit, I did forget to read the public participation policy that we open every meeting with. So, "The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the Boards and Committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the Open Meeting Law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the Open Meeting Law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board." So our first agenda item tonight is approval of minutes. And this would be the September 5th meeting?
Make a motion to approve minutes, September 5th, 2023.
A second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to, again, backtrack a little bit. We do have a list of the committees that have openings.
We do.
And I forgot this was in our packet. So the Agricultural Advisory Committee has an open seat for, it looks like, two years and another, two open seats that would be three-year terms. Capital Improvement Planning Committee is generally a one-year appointment. I mean, there's one seat open, that's the community member. The Disability Commission has one seat open that would be a three-year term. The Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee has three seats open, and those are one-year appointments. The Emergency Management Planning Committee has one seat open, and those are generally three-year terms. The Open Space Committee has two seats open, and they say, this says they have terms expiring June 30th of 2024, so you could fill that at least briefly and then decide if you wanted to stay on. And then also the Zoning Board of Appeals, which are generally five-year appointments. There's an open seat that expires in 2026 and another open seat that would expire in 2028. Again, all that information is online, and if you wanted to learn about what those committees do, there's probably some information online or you could reach out to the town.
There is information online about applying to either my office or the town clerk's office. There's a form that we ask individuals to fill out.
Yeah, right, there's a form. But is there information about what the different committees do?
They can get that information from my office.
Great. Okay.
May I appear at public forum?
Oh, yes. Oh, you're right. Ed's, every meeting, I'm getting off kilter. Is anyone here for public forum? Okay.
Just before you move on, did you carry out the vote for approving the meeting minutes?
Yes.
You did, okay, because I just noticed it. I just caught it. Under announcements on the first page of the September 5th meeting minutes, it says September 9th that the EMS Services Report will be presented, and that is the 27th, actually.
Okay. So maybe we should revote it with that correction?
Yeah, I think if the meeting just, if the meeting minutes are just noted that these will be corrected, yeah, that the board still approves.
So it's just, it's not substantive, it's just a date. Okay. Okay, topic one. Our, our Open Space Committee members are here to discuss the Connecticut River Greenway Trail Memorandum of Understanding. If you could just introduce yourselves for town speaker, that would be great.
So Rich Abbott, Chair of the Open Space Committee.
Mark Gelot, Member of the Open Space Committee.
And I'll introduce Sarah LaValle, who's the Assistant Planning Director, City of Northampton.
Sarah, welcome, and Rich, and thanks for being here.
So, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
So the first item we talked about was the Connecticut River Multi-Use Trail. I'll let Mark do the details, but this is the town meeting, the town voted to support moving forward, working with the City of Northampton to try to obtain funding and ultimately construction of the trail, so.
And I've got some, I've got a small map that I think will help, help for understanding of the Memorandum of Understanding, so if I could give that to you now?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
So I don't know how the board wants to attack this Memorandum of Understanding, but like, we could just start right at the top and, and start reading. The real guts of it are the Northampton section and the Hatfield section in terms of what they will be, they will be promising. So do you want me just to start reading it?
Sure, yep. That would be great.
So I'll start at the top. It's a one-page document, so it's not excessively long. Whereas the City of Northampton and the Town of Hatfield have, through town meeting and city council approvals, endorsed a Damon Road, Northampton to Elm Court-Hatfield Shared Use Path within the Connecticut River Greenway. Now, therefore, the Hatfield Select Board and the Northampton Mayor agree to the following, subject to any required town meeting and city council approvals. The City of Northampton will, number one, pay directly for the project design and right-of-way plans, provided that the city is able to access the $300,000 legislative earmark provided by Chapter 176 of the Acts of 2022. The parties agree that entering into this Memorandum of Understanding does not commit the Town of Hatfield to any costs. So that's number one. I mean, should I just, do we want to have any discussion on that, or is that?
I'm fine with it, but it may be my colleagues have.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Number two, the City of Northampton will donate to the Town of Hatfield, subject to remaining, retaining a shared use path easement. The fee interest it holds in 11.579 acres, more or less parcel of land located in the Town of Hatfield off the southeastern side of Hatfield Road in Northampton and Elm Court in Hatfield, and the westerly side of Little Nipponset Road in Hatfield, and shown as parcel H on a plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Northampton and Hatfield, Hampshire Registry prepared for the City of Northampton dated February 4th, 2011, and recorded in the Hampshire Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 224, page 97. So, number two, I made that small map so you can see the piece of property that Northampton is going to donate to Hatfield, and you can probably, you can see that on your maps as Northampton donates to Hatfield 11.58 acres. This land, up until the time it will be donated, is owned completely by the City of Northampton.
Okay.
It was previously owned by Valley Land Fund, which was a conservation group, along with Mr. Skobisky. And between that time and today, Mr. Skobisky has sold his fee interest to the City of Northampton, so City of Northampton owns it wholly and intends to donate it to the Town of Hatfield. The piece of property is wholly in the Town of Hatfield. So that's, hopefully the map makes it clear as to what, what that piece is.
Okay. Why is that necessary or germane to this project?
At some point, the trail actually goes through a very tiny portion of a corner of that land, and the Hatfield would grant an easement through that tiny portion as it's part of the bargain with Northampton. There's also a parcel of land in Northampton that Hatfield owns, and that's the next, that's the next kind of section down, and so it would be kind of a land swap. And that was, this was actually discussed 13 years ago at a Board of Select meeting, that this would be a possibility of, Northampton doesn't really want to own property in Hatfield, and it may be also beneficial for Hatfield not to own property in the City of Northampton. So that, unless, I don't know, Sarah, if you want to add anything to that rationale for?
Yeah, it just, it seemed like a logical trade-off. As you can tell by the date on the survey, Northampton's been at this for quite some time, negotiating with Mr. Skobisky to purchase this parcel. So the, the trade-off so that each town doesn't own land in another community seemed to be one that made sense and had been.
But it has nothing to do with the development of the trail. It's just happening at the same time.
There is a very small segment.
I mean, I see, it's like literally a little, is that the 750 feet we're talking about?
That little corner is.
That little corner where there's?
That's not even, that's more like 50 feet. The 750 is kind of through the Hatfield Town Yard section. You can see.
This, okay, this upper part here?
The upper part is presently owned by the Town of Hatfield. It's called the Town Yard Lot.
Right.
And it kind of bends around there, and you can see the zigzagging of the town boundary. So yes, Hatfield would be granting, would be granting an easement through property that it owns for this multi-use trail.
Okay. But, so there's no, there's no reason for the property transfer other than, it doesn't, it's not really.
It's not made or break, if that's, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, I'm just.
If Hatfield decided that they didn't want this property, the project could still move forward.
Right. I'm not necessarily suggesting that, I'm just.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
And then this number three, oh, you didn't read that yet. I don't want to jump ahead. Will maintain 750.
The City of Northampton will maintain the 750 feet, more or less, of the trail in Hatfield because the trail starts on land in the City of Northampton on Elm Court and is all in Northampton except for that small gap.
Okay, and this is what runs right along here?
That's the, yeah, the dotted line section, which is in Hatfield, which is in the Town of Hatfield, that's the section that Northampton will maintain. So where it says proposed trail dotted, that little section of winding piece, that's 750 feet, more or less.
Oh, I see. Okay, because, yeah, I see what you're saying, because this part is back in Northampton.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. So that's the, that is what the City of Northampton's part of the bargain would be. The second part is the Town of Hatfield will donate to the City of Northampton to add to the city's Connecticut River Greenway, which includes the right to develop a shared use path and related parking, one, the portion of its land on Elm Court that is within the boundaries of the City of Northampton. So that means that little triangular piece, which actually the Town of Hatfield owns that presently, we are going to donate that as part of this whole transaction to the City of Northampton.
The 1.24 acres.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And number two, the Town of Hatfield will provide an easement across the Hatfield DPW land on Elm Court for a shared use path and related parking, shown on the attached plans consistent with any DPW requirements. So that's, again, we just talked about that, that little, the 750 feet is the easement that Hatfield would donate to the City of Northampton for the multi-use trail.
Okay, so the parking doesn't show on the one you just handed us?
No, it doesn't.
It shows on, so the parking spots, if I'm reading this correctly, are actually in Northampton?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Only, yeah, just, just barely, because then you're on that side of the railroad overpass, yes.
One little corner of one of the spots looks like it's actually in Hatfield.
Yes, right.
Okay.
So that's maybe another point of where an easement would be granted.
An easement across the Hatfield, maybe. So when they, this number two, an easement across the Hatfield DPW land?
Right.
That's the portion that shows proposed trail dotted?
Correct.
Okay. I'm, I guess my concern with the way that this is brought up is that the, the discussion about what Northampton will do is very specific and detailed and refers to plans and everything else.
Yep.
The parts about what Hatfield will do is not identified quite as clearly.
I would agree.
And since it, you know, it is very nuanced, right, these back and forth, I think that the description of what Hatfield will do should be as descriptive as the Northampton piece, right? So that there's no question today or 20 years from now about what we intended with this agreement.
Right, right. I mean, I could see that being a very valid thing, and I don't, I don't see that being a problem, do you, Sarah?
Yeah, the only question with that is that we're only at the 10% design stage at this point, and nothing is finalized, so there's a potential for four parking spaces at the maximum. The exact layout of the spaces and the final details of what that would look like are not quite finalized, so it might be slightly difficult to reference something that, that we would know for sure is going to move forward in the future.
Right, but I think even, even, you know, the, how you describe the, the portion of the, you know, where the, where everything is in relation to, you know, it should be an actual land description, like you have in, right?
I think a reference for book and page. That could be added, that's easy, you know?
Would be appropriate, yeah.
Yeah, it should be much spelled out, yes, no question what we mean when we're talking about all of this. And then obviously, this has to be reviewed by town council. Right, Marlene?
Yes, it does.
And I guess I want to give some thought to the donation of land to Hatfield. I mean, on its face, it sounds wonderful, right? Why wouldn't we want the land? But I don't know anything about this land or what, you know, so I'd want to, I would want to know more about the parcel and, you understand, do you get what I'm saying, Marlene? Like?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Do you know, Sarah, is there a conservation restriction on the land?
There would need to be a conservation restriction placed on it, so it couldn't be used for general town purposes. It would need to remain in open space.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and see, that's, that should be very, all of that. This is not, I think that there's a lot of detail missing from this, especially if there, if we're going to accept land, it has to have a conservation restriction, it all has to be.
Yeah, I mean, what it was attempting to make clear is that the city will donate it, it's not requiring the Town of Hatfield to accept it.
Right.
And this is a Memorandum of Understanding, this isn't a legal property transfer, so.
So I understand that there'd need, but before I enter into a Memorandum of Understanding, I want it to be extremely clear what, what we're doing, that's all. I mean, that's just good practice. So that, those are, that's what I, I don't know how you guys feel about any of that, but.
I don't think what you've mentioned is something that's going to be difficult. I mean, to spell something out, I don't think that will take a lot of time. And I think we can get that maybe by our next meeting and have the MOU, they can spell it all out by our next meeting.
It would be nice, too, if it could go ahead of time to town council.
Before the next meeting?
Before the, yeah, if we could get a new draft with those things spilt, spelled out. I mean, you know, it's just the, the description of the land and what Hatfield will do isn't, you know, it's not particularly descriptive, that's all.
You see, any issue with?
No.
Can you clarify?
No, we can update that.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
And then, I mean, just in the interest of getting it taken care of, if we could get it in enough time for our town council to review it ahead of time so we don't look at it again and then have to send it off to town council?
Yeah. The board's next meeting is October 5th. I don't know if that gives you enough time.
How far in advance would you, would you want it?
Well, if.
To give you enough time?
I like to give town council at least a week.
Okay. Okay, great. I can send a, send a revision.
So a book and page description of the Hatfield parcel? Yep. Is primarily what you're looking for. The fact that it's got a conservation restriction on it, I think, would be part of the deed, it's part of the deed now, isn't it?
It is, but, but that can be clarified.
Yeah, it should be, it just should be all spelled out. I mean, it's kind of a complicated setup here, and so I'm just thinking about, you know, if we're looking at this for whatever reason in the years ahead, I mean, we all know what's going on right now, but let's make sure it's all spelled out really clearly.
No, it is, it is complicated, it is confused, which is exactly the reason that I did this map, is because.
The map you gave is very helpful compared to the map that's in the agreement.
Yeah, well, that was the intention. Good, good.
So maybe we could, maybe both could be incorporated into the agreement or something because yours is much more clear, so.
I guess I can leave that up to attorneys or whatever, you know? This is not official, it's done on my home computer. So, but anyway, it, it at least is descriptive, so.
Is Northampton going to take care of the parking lot also?
Parking lot details have not been finalized. Potential is there, but it would need to be worked on through the Mass DOT design process, which is another component of the MOU, is that Hatfield would need to assign a representative to work with the city and with Mass DOT on those designs.
Well, it doesn't mention anything about that in this version.
The final paragraph.
Oh, sorry.
So.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Should I just, I might as well read it.
Sure.
The final paragraph, "Both parties will participate," I don't know, I don't know if it's white words, "both parties will participate in the design process. The Town of Hatfield will assign, as its option, the town administrator or a member of the Open Space Committee, and the City of Northampton will assign its Office of Planning and Sustainability to represent them before meetings with Mass DOT and the designer, subject to any necessary legislative or administrative approvals on any agreements," so.
So that's just making sure that the town's concerns and issues are raised early in the process.
Okay. I guess my preference would be that it either be you or someone from the board. And then my other, when, you know, if, I understand that you don't know necessarily the design of the parking spaces, but the memorandum should speak to the care of them. I mean, we know that there's going to be maintenance and, and care and all of that, and who's going to take care of that? Because they sit almost exclusively on Northampton's land.
I'll have to look at that in more detail compared to the 10% design and where things are supposed to be located, but it may be a little challenging to define it to that level of detail at this point, just because we're so early in the design stages.
So are you saying that parking spaces may be located somewhere else?
So it would be within the easement granted to the city for the trail.
So if there was some easement on?
But it would be within the Town of Hatfield.
Oh.
The parking spaces?
Well, if we, it's part of the donated land.
Oh, wait a second.
Right.
They're.
They're right within here.
It's sort of, it's on the edge, so there's some.
Could be some on the DPW.
Correct.
Okay, so could, could straddle the town line.
I'm seeing, if I'm looking at this map correctly, the one that's attached, to me, it looks like the space is as proposed on here, and I understand that's preliminary, but they sit almost exclusively on Northampton's property.
Right, there's just a little edge perhaps.
Little corner.
Right, that's the way I understood it.
So you're saying they sit in the easement, but the, or, the easement, I thought, is down.
Correct.
Further. It doesn't look like to me it's in the easement.
Right, that would be city, if the Town of Hatfield would give that land to the City of Northampton, and the parking lot would be almost entirely in that space, correct, Mark?
That's the way I look at the map, too, although the map is a 10% design, and we really haven't talked about parking as a community. So I think, I think, I think everybody wants to leave it enough open at this point to say that if they wanted, you know, five, if, if both Hatfield and Northampton, or Hatfield would accept five parking spaces or six, could some of it be on the DPW lot? Possibly. That's, I think that's still up for discussion, and we're not.
I guess I'm just not understanding where, because when I look at these, it looks like they're on Northampton, but you're saying they're in the easement, but they're completely on.
Right, I don't believe it's either, but. Because if it falls right here, that's, that's Hatfield land right now that would become Northampton land.
Correct, correct.
And.
The town line goes right, does it not go right through those space, through the corner of that space?
It's very, it's very close. I mean, there's, according to the survey.
Right, but that's, so with that, so the Hatfield, right now Hatfield owns land in Northampton, and as part of this Memorandum of Understanding, Hatfield would donate that to Northampton.
Oh, I see, so the Hatfield, like the town yard property, actually a little bit crosses into Northampton. Is that what you're saying?
It does, so the whole triangle is within the City of Northampton, but is owned by the Town of Hatfield.
Oh, I see, so that little triangle is technically.
Where you're wanting Hatfield to donate to Northampton.
A small, I mean, there's no ortho.
This, in this map, Mark?
Right.
Right here.
Yeah.
It says Hatfield donates 1.23, 2.4 acres.
Yeah.
Which means if we donate it to Northampton, then it's in North, it, those parking spots would be in.
Yes, it's just four lots, four spaces, as in the design, the sketch.
I mean, and those spaces look like they go literally right up against the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
Looks pretty close.
I, I'm not the designer, so I don't, I don't question that at this point.
But there's an embankment there, the tracks are.
I mean, I just could see there being, I, I just want the memorandum to be as clear as possible because, you know, there could be some controversy about. because, you know, there could be some controversy about how many spots and where those are located. And so it has to, the memorandum of understanding has to somehow speak to that, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's, again, it's just difficult because we're so early in the design stages.
And maybe the MOU says that there'll be a future MOU at a, at a certain design stage.
Okay, and we, that's, that would be.
And then we'll have better information. So it'll be a, an MOU that we enter into until you reach a particular percentage of design. And then we'll revisit it so that we then have the option to look at those spaces, where they are, how much they go into Hatfield's land, how close they are to the tracks. So I understand you can't do that right now, but maybe we enter the agreement with the understanding it's temporary until you reach a certain design phase.
Right.
Okay.
We want to bring up the point that this is kind of where the parking is designed right now.
Right.
It's a very preliminary parking.
Right.
It could go away totally if the community wants it to, or it could expand. And the question is.
Right.
As long as we all know that we have a voice in that, but it hasn't been decided at this point.
So we can't make it, we can't enter into an agreement and we don't know what the agreement is. That's all I'm saying. So let's revisit this. I mean, I, once we add the, you know, expanded language and town council reviews it, I'm okay with approving a memorandum of understanding, like I say, that would be a first MOU, understanding that there'll be a subsequent one. Yeah, well, there'll have to be, yeah, if we're gonna, if we're not sure about the parking.
I think it's important to reference parking at some point, and this is as good a time as any to put it in there. But it's, it's good to know that this is not the definitive plan, but it's the assumption that a parking is going to be included.
I just hope you're gonna, I can't, I, I can't comfortably enter into an MOU on behalf of the town for something I don't exactly know what it's gonna be.
Yeah, what Northampton is looking for at this point is a commitment to the participation in the process and providing this, this lot to the city along with the easement for the trail. But we won't be able to provide details on the parking lot until the 25% design stage is completed, which is a year out from now at this point.
Right, so you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That at that point, I want, I want to update the MOU after we have more information and another discussion about it. Does that make sense to you?
Absolutely.
You? Yeah.
Could I ask a question just for clarification? So this MOU is not intended to cover 100% of the design work. Is that, that's sort of what my takeaway is.
I think they, I think their intention was for it. I'm just raising the issue that I don't, I'm not comfortable with that, entering into that agreement on behalf of Hatfield until I see more design.
I'm just thinking that as you continue through the design process, there could be other things that come up or changes.
Yeah, so if we look at this as a step one MOU and understanding that there'll be subsequent ones once we get further into the design, then, I, I, I mean, I think that that's the, that's, from our standpoint on behalf of the town, how we have to look at this. I can't just enter into something I don't know what I'm getting into.
Sure. I mean, what's critical at this point, again, is knowing that the, the town is interested in the, at least the trail portion of this moving forward, parking.
Well, I mean, town meeting made that decision. And so, and so we'll, we'll enter into an agreement once it's specific enough. But I just want to be very clear that I look at it as a first step. There's gonna have to be additional MOUs when we have all the information and we can see where, where the, you know, the intended parking is and how much that may encroach into the DPW yard or whatever.
I mean, the, and I don't know the answers, but when we get to the 25% design portion, that things, things, when things get much firmer, what would be the process for the town? The town will have input of that during that period.
Yeah, and, and again, having the commitment to assign a participant to discuss these with MassDOT and participate in meetings with MassDOT and the city. MassDOT's process is to have a formal public hearing at the 25% design stage, so that would be the, the time for anyone to weigh in on, on the entire project, not just the portion of Hatfield.
Right. Right, but at that point, I think then a new MOU that is more specific to the parking should be, we should enter into that.
Certainly, I think if there's an easement that expands, that expands more into the DPW yard lot for more parking, then, yeah, that should probably.
Yeah.
I mean, we would, we would be, the town would be agreeing to the design at some point, right? We'd be part of that sign off of, like, how does that process work? You get to 25% and you're submitting stuff to the DOT for, for funding at that point?
Yeah, so the, the 10% design stage allows us to get on the, in line for funding through the transportation improvement program and allows us to continue those formal conversations with MassDOT. 25% is, is the next design stage.
And that, that would get submitted to DOT for future funding.
Yes.
But the town would have to sign off on that also, right?
I'm.
Because.
Well, if there isn't more of an easement than what's shown on the stage 10% plans, for instance, a bigger easement that would require some more portion of the DPW yard, that would have to be codified at some point.
Correct, and that would be worked out during the design process.
So I presume.
I, I just want to make sure that we revisit this when we have that 25% design.
That's what I was trying to get to, is like, is there a formal point where the town actually signing up again?
Right, which, which, which that question hasn't been answered yet. You've asked it, but we, you know, so I, that's why I just want to make sure we're preserving our rights to, to review this and update, have an updated MOU at that point.
Good.
Will, will the city of Northampton take care of that park with the benches and bike racks? Will they do the maintenance of it? Sweep the parking lot and pick up if there's needs to be cleaned up or?
That's what I mean.
So, so if the, if the property is owned by the city of Northampton, then yes.
Right. So you're, we're not, you're not suggesting that, that map does not give, in this, Hatfield donates that land to Northampton, so it would be Northampton's land where the spaces are and any bike racks or anything.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's part of what I'm getting to.
Okay.
Yeah. The maintenance and upkeep and all of that, so. When we know what that space is gonna look like, let's upgrade the MOU.
We won't be able to get to that design stage. And we need the commitment from Hatfield that the property is agreed to be donated to the city.
Right, they're gonna do that.
We're gonna do that once count, once this is flushed. So we're gonna up, you know, put more, greater detail into this agreement about exactly what parcels we're talking about, where, where everything is. We're gonna have it reviewed by council. We will enter into that once council gives us the okay. But I want you to understand that that agreement is silent about the parking spaces and the upkeep and all of that. I ex, I expect that Hatfield and Northampton will do a, like a, a second MOU once we get to that phase. I understand that you need this to be able to even move on. We'll take care of that. But then I do want an opportunity to, to redo that MOU once we know what the actual project looks like and so that there can be specific language in there about where the spots are gonna be, who's gonna maintain them, all of that.
Sure.
Okay, that's all I'm trying to get at. Ed, anything else? Yeah?
Yeah, okay. Good.
Yeah.
Just a quick, one more piece of open space business, quick update on the pavilion. So we got the design drawings in, in August, beginning of August from our, the architect for the timber frame. We didn't go out to bid right away, just seemed bad timing, middle of summer there. So I did have a discussion with, just a general discussion with a local contractor about timing. And so I think we're gonna meet, Open Space will meet Thursday, but I suspect we'll be going out next week or two, work with Marlene and get that bid out. If we're lucky enough to get someone to bid on it, because of this DCAM rules, it's very limited number of contractors who, who would qualify. Just to lead up to get the timber frame purchased and milled and all that, it's like several months. So the sooner we get it going, the better, is what I heard.
Yeah, I mean, why was August not a good time to bid?
Just in the middle of summer and contractors are busy, but.
Yeah.
But, and we, you know, I wanted to make sure the Open Space Committee was, we met before we did do that, and we didn't meet until September, so. That's where things stand.
Great. I know. Let's hope, let's hope that there's some bids on that. Okay, perfect. Thank you for that update. Thank you for everything else, too.
Thank you.
So our next topic would be further discussion on something we started talking about last week, which is a conservation restriction and, and just an issue up on Old Stage Road. Who wanted to come forward to the microphone to talk about this?
So we also have the fire chief.
Oh, yeah.
And the building inspector and Stu Watson from Kestrel Land Trust joining them.
Right, so hi, Stu, welcome. Stu is from Kestrel.
Hi.
And, and then, of course, you know, our fire chief and building inspector are back there, which would be great to, to have you both here for, for this discussion. So, Marlene, do you want to sort of put in a, just sort of summarize what's happened since the last meeting or?
Since the last meeting, I have consulted with the Conservation Commission and invited the building inspector and fire chief. Conservation Commission could not be represented this evening, but they have submitted comments for the board's consideration. And I had also talked with Stu Watson, who works for Kestrel Land Trust. Kestrel Land Trust holds the conservation restriction. So at the last meeting, there were, you know, questions or concerns about improving that gravel road, which is a private way. And we know that it, it, it starts right at the town's corner lot, crosses the town's property and into Elvia and Daniel's property, and it extends beyond your, your property. So I, I had expressed, you know, taking the time to take a look at that conservation restriction because what I had read through that restriction was that the road could not be improved. So, you know, as I said, I, I talked with, with Stu Watson and they have, Kestrel Land Trust has reviewed the conservation restriction and the communications that Elvia and Daniel have provided. So, Stu, I provided the select board with the email that you sent, which summarizes what you and I talked about on the phone. And so because the gravel road, the private way predates the conservation restriction, Kestrel has determined that improvements would be acceptable, but not too drastic. So in other words, widening the road 20 feet, no greater than 20 feet. And I understand that's what the fire chief requires for emergency, emergency vehicles. As far as removing, the removal of any trees, it cannot be large trees. So it'd be small, small trees brush.
Okay. Less, not, they, they have to, not greater than four inches.
Right, large trees. Is that four feet?
Four.
Four.
Four inches.
Four inches, I mean. Four inches.
Four inch diameter, so it'd be like a tree, like, maybe, you know, arm, as big around as your arm would be the maximum size that you could remove.
Okay, okay.
And I don't actually think there's really any trees in the way, so that shouldn't be an issue.
She said there's one. Is it larger than that? It's larger than that.
Okay.
And that's if the, this also specifies that the root should not deviate from the center line of the existing road.
Right.
So that tree you're talking about exists in that.
And it must remain a gravel road.
Right, remain a gravel road. Well, I mean, I don't know what we do about that if there's a tree in there.
Yeah, I guess the question here, is, is there a way to avoid all this by just everybody agreeing that it's just a common driveway and treating it as a driveway and not a road? So there is a recorded agreement discussing a common driveway. And again, the driveway shouldn't have the 20-foot width requirement that a regular town road does. Again, this is on private property. And there are plenty other examples of shared driveways or even unshared driveways that don't meet that width requirement on the prior to. So, you know, if, if everyone can be on the same page that just leave it as is, not bother the tree, not bother improving it further, just recognize that it's a driveway and then move on from there.
What does that do for emergency response, Bob?
What is the width of the current driveway? It's roughly 10 feet?
At least, at least 10 feet.
10 feet? Yep.
Stu, can you hear them?
And how long is?
I'm catching most of it. But if, if there's a specific question for me, please repeat it.
Well, could you speak to that again? Did you hear that about trying to keep it a driveway instead of a?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then there was, we just had.
And now, I've communicated with the neighbors on email and they asked me that same question. But from Kestrel's perspective, we have no ability to help them determine if it's a driveway or a right of way or gravel road. That's, that's not our call to make.
Okay. And what about you?
The total length from Old Stage to the top of the driveway? Or the total development?
So the way between the Kestrel and our lot is about 275 feet. And to the.
So from the edge of Old, where the Old Stage, about our gravel road or the right of way to the western side of our lot, that's about 270 feet.
And so that's, that's what you would want to consider your driveway?
It will be less because we don't need to go.
I mean, it is, like, that's the current right of way, which is, in legal terms, our title exam shows that it's a common driveway.
Okay.
Yes.
So.
There's no reason for us not to consider less than that.
Okay, so that's, but that's my, what I'm getting at is that's the length of driveway, so to speak, that an emergency vehicle may be required to travel up to get to your property.
Yep.
So that's quite lengthy for such a narrow.
Correct. It doesn't leave us a lot of room to get up the road as a truck that's eight foot six wide.
And then turn around.
Any twists or turns at all, you're giving us no room to be able to get the truck up there. And that even includes the ambulance, because the ambulance is the same width at the box.
But are there, are there, are there requirements, Kyle, when, if you build a house that your driveway has to meet certain specs for emergency vehicles?
Well, yeah, normally it would be if it's a travel, any travel distance in excess of a minor vet, Bob reviews it, would review it. So, you know, if you had a driveway over a couple hundred feet, it's kind of an unusual situation. So certainly I would ask him for his thoughts and input if he can get his vehicles up there. Sometimes, sometimes in communities, if the driveway's too long, they even make the home be sprinkler, you know, like in Northampton and Florence, you know.
But even for an ambulance getting up there, you know, so even if it wasn't necessarily a fire situation, but the ambulance is just as wide, right, as the fire truck?
Yeah, that's total width it is. I believe when this was discussed over the last 10 or 12 months, when some of the questions had come forward, I had referenced that if, if the driveway was gonna be greater than 200 feet in length, that it was going to, I requested that the driveway be 20 feet wide because now we're not able to get a, get an engine up there without squeezing it in. And then if a ladder truck needs to make it up the driveway, the outriggers, we need to be able to. we need to be able to set those up, because we're going so far off the road. We can no longer reach it from Old Stage, so we need to access the house.
So that's what I always look at when somebody files for a permit, is the distance they have to go.
Are there hydrants that far up?
No.
Good question. I was just thinking, I mean, so wouldn't it be a tanker?
We're gonna use a tanker, but the engine still has to get within so many feet. I mean, our, our pre connects are only 200 feet off the truck, so everything greater than that is a delay of getting water onto a potential fire.
That's why some towns require a cistern or even a tank in the basement of the home that has reserved water to activate for fire protection when you have these long, long driveways.
So for Kestrel, my question is, on, on this, on a situation like this, where it seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong, what's being suggested by Kestrel, the road width not to exceed 20 feet and all of that, keeping it gravel is all fine, but the only thing that's a sticking point for you is the removal of that one tree?
For me? Or for Kestrel Land Trust?
Well, you, when we talked about these, you.
It exists there, so like, there's no way to meet the requirements unless that tree will be removed. And I don't even think, I don't even know if it can remove. There's a pine tree right by the, before the posted sign.
If there's one tree that's the sticking point here, I mean, I'd be willing to do a site visit and look at it with the landowners or the town. But I'm sure we could work around or with one tree. If the town's okay with that, I should mention that the town owns this land. Kestrel just has the conservation restriction on it. So the town can also weigh in and say, if they have a, you know, if they're against any trees being cut whatsoever, that would be your call.
Okay, Marlene?
I just wanted to know the quick claim deed that
Yes.
was approved when the town acquired the land from the Coles. On page two of the quick claim deed, and I believe you may have that in your packet. If you look down halfway down on page two, the above parcel is conveyed subject to the following. Number five, a right of way reserved in a deed. And so that would be the, the gravel road. I believe that's what is referred to as the gravel road. And then number six, the possible rights of others to use the woods road. So it's referred to as woods road, as a woods road. But it is a gravel road.
One thought. I was thinking, but I think those are, I think those are two separate points. The first point is the right of way that the abutters have to use the gravel road to access their land. I think the, the next point could be other abutters using woods roads, maybe for like a timber harvest or something. But my reading of that is those are two separate, they're referencing two separate roads.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, Stu. I mean, we'd need a determination from that by town council now.
And I'll also mention while we're, while you brought up the deed. So their right of way to use this is in the deed from the previous landowner to the town of Hatfield. It is in the title report as well, and it's mentioned in the CR. It doesn't discuss it in any detail, but this, this right of way certainly exists. So there's no question about that from Kestrel's perspective.
Okay.
And just to backtrack on the length of the driveway or right of way, so it doesn't have to be 270, I just meant, meant that it, the total length, so. Like, we don't know yet the location of the house, where it's gonna be. Do you know what I mean? I just mentioned the western boundary, that's like.
So that would be the longest it could be?
Exactly.
Okay.
So.
It could be shorter.
It might be shorter, but we don't know that yet.
Add any questions or?
No, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to better understand it. First of all, the right of way was granted before the conservation restriction.
That's correct.
But the right of way goes over town-owned land, that's 74 feet, which is under conservation restriction. So the question also becomes if, if there's a property built and they use the right of way, can our emergency vehicles access that property? But then there was also conversation of those, the right, if the right of way is no longer a road and it becomes a driveway, it's on town property.
Right, it's a.
So that.
Right, we can't have a private driveway on town property.
That becomes, that's, that's my sort of like, how does a driveway on town property become? So I don't, I don't know if the, I, I mean, Kestrel's sort of saying that we can, they can have 20 feet wide, not cut any large trees, and as long as it stays gravel road. Correct, I mean, that's where we're at now. Am I sort of understanding the situation as it is? And then it's, it's the conservation restriction is causing this little issue, but the property owner, on the other hand, does have a right of way to get to their property.
That's right.
It's how we determine they're allowed to get to that property.
Right.
Because there's a conversation restriction in place, and there is also town-owned property. So yes, what were you gonna say?
Why wouldn't a straight shot driveway right off of Old Stage? And even if you cross this right of way, you're allowed to cross a right of way that I've ever seen. So why isn't a normal driveway up from Old Stage a possibility? Why, why is that right of way the only remedy to this? They do that frontage on Old Stage Road. Yes, you do.
There's no road there. It's only a paper road.
Silverware road.
Well, it's a paper road, but you created, you know, it was widened, so you could just make it wider to that point.
Right.
And it's sitting on the wetlands.
Yeah.
Well, and also, aren't we waiting on the Conservation Commission?
The Conservation Commission chair let me know that the Conservation Commission just recently received a response to the enforcement order that was issued, and they will be reviewing that and having a discussion at their next meeting, which will, in October, I'm not sure of the date.
Thursday. Yeah, the meeting's in two days.
Oh, this week?
This week.
Oh, okay. Didn't really, I didn't think they were meeting until October. Okay.
I mean, that's a piece of information we need to have, right, before we can?
Yes, because they, they did have some, some concerns. I mentioned, they issued an enforcement order, and they wanted to receive a report.
And in a perfect world, you want what?
I was promised I was buying a buildable lot. This is what I want.
But, and who promised you that?
Mr. Kyle behind me.
Now, what I said was that lot has lots of issues.
Never heard of it.
And even wetlands and everything, you have to do notices of determination. It's not an easy lot by any stretch of the imagination. Is it buildable if you jump through hoops? Yes, it's considered a buildable piece of land, but many hoops to jump through.
If I could just clarify, first, like, well, at the last Conservation Committee, first time I heard those words, what we heard before multiple times prior to purchasing, we were very proactive about our role before we even bought the land, because what we, the way it was advertised, the way we were told by the town by multiple departments, that we just need to build a section of a town road. And that's what we were trying to figure out.
What other departments told you that?
Assessor office, building department, fire department. DPW, all we in person. Daniel and I, on December 1st, 2022, we attended Conservation Committee meeting. We came, introduced ourselves. That was about three months before we went bought the property. We said, we know we border with conservation land. There's this situation, we're told we need to build a road. It just sounds so unique, and we're, we just wanna make sure we're not stepping into something. And, you know, they looked at maps. Mind you, we were told that, oh, you guys should contact Kestrel Land Trust. Maybe they'll donate a piece of land to you. So it was a short and nice meeting. They said, you know, we made sure that we asked questions, they looked at the map. So we proceeded with buying the land, thinking that improving Old Stage Road was the only piece to it. Never have we heard, and I did my own homework, the only wetlands that I saw on Mass GIS, they were in the back of northern side of our lot. So when we started removing some trees on our own lot, I'm not talking about Old Stage Road, we had no idea we were in the buffer zone, and that's where the enforcement order came from. So conservation, wetlands, all of that was very new. We were.
Weren't the, do, do these things show, they should show up in a title search, no? Not wetlands, but the, the other, the restrictions and?
No.
Kestrel should show up in a title search.
That's what I was gonna, I mean, how could that not show up in a title?
Well, I mean, we, we can.
Do you, did you have, do you have, have you seen the title search?
I have.
And they don't show up in there?
Well, the right of way shows up.
Right of way, yeah.
Right, and the conservation restriction is recorded with the registry of deeds.
Let me be clear.
There's no CR on their land.
Not on their land, on the town's land.
Yes, the Conservation Restriction is only on the town of Hatfield's land.
Right.
So we were never told such words. Have you been told? I've never, I'm sorry, maybe we were speaking different languages at a time. Never, anybody told me that I need to jump through the hoops, go to, you know, so whatever was told, we did what we were told. Build the stage, Old Stage Road, improve it 400 feet. We did that.
You did that? Okay, so Mike, I just want to get back to my original question, which is, ideally, what is the solution you want to see? I understand ideally you want to be able to build a house. The solution to this actual problem, what is it you would like to see? How we remedy this access and making sure there can be emergency services? We have an obligation to provide those to you if you need them.
What are the options? I mean, there's law. Law says driveway needs to be at least 10 feet wide. And if we consider that right of way is driveway, which what my title exam shows that it's a common driveway, then they're all set right now. Do you know what I mean? But then if it needs to be 20 feet wide, and that's why we, this is the reason we came originally, well, last time we were here, asking for permission, because we did ask permission from Kestrel Land Trust. They said, it's owned by the town, you gotta get permission from the town. And that's why we came to you last time. So now Kestrel's saying, whatever the communication you had and agreement you had between you, and now, yes, you can go ahead and improve it, but then don't touch big trees. But there is one big pine tree right there. I mean, you can't ask me. You have to give me the solutions or options. I mean, I can't.
I'm not asking for the solution. I'm asking what it, what you're, what you really would like the determination to be of how you access it. That's what I'm asking.
I mean.
I think the preference would be to treat it as, again, a common driveway that was put in place before the land was rented to the town. There's a common driveway agreement record saying that this lot, at the time, there were two lots, they're subsequently split up into now three lots, have this shared, again, gravel road, and it's listed as a common driveway agreement. So if we can rely on that, considering that predates everything, then we'll go with that. If the requirement is, again, now it's, it's town property, make it to town specifications, then then that's that, and just, we just need that in writing, saying that that's what the requirement is, so we can proceed.
Meaning like the 20 feet?
Correct.
Well, obviously, we need a determination from the Conservation Commission, and I, you know, town council needs to.
Well, the Conservation Commission is only concerned with the part of the road that was already improved in their particular lot. They're not looking at the Kestrel property. And that was part of the scope of what the consultant looked at and the enforcement order. So in the same thing, the title search, the title only looked at the lot that they were buying. It wasn't looking at the titles of neighboring lots, so it wouldn't have picked up on the conservation restriction on Kestrel, because that wasn't the subject property. Subject property was the one that they bought. And again, it just showed again, it was subject to the right of way and the common driveway agreement, and that's all that they were on notice of.
Sorry, I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll just play all that. Because this can get confusing. Your Conservation Commission, it's, it's easy to conflate multiple things, including their role as administering Wetlands Protection Act at the local level. And then their, then Conservation Commissions also have a role in managing town-owned conservation land. For this particular project, what the commission has tasked the property owners to do is just draft up a restoration plan for the work they've already done. So that's what they retained me to do, and that's what we submitted to them. I guess it was last week, we submitted a draft restoration plan for the work they've already done. They're not weighing in on rights of way and common driveways or anything. That's nothing to do with their scope of this project, if that helps.
I thought we had something in our files saying that we had to wait for a determination.
Well, Conservation Commission would, would like the board to consider waiting until the Conservation Commission.
Well, I mean, I think we have to wait, and town council hasn't weighed in on this?
No.
I mean, I, I feel like we really need to engage him on this. I, I want to get this right.
Thank you.
And I, I, you know, I, I want, I want to make sure we do this right and that we don't create further problems. I want to make sure that we can try to help you develop this lot and build this home that you want, but I also want to make sure that we can get emergency vehicles up there. You know, there, there's a lot of different things to consider. I don't want to, I don't want to rush it, and I think that the, you know, our, our legal counsel needs to review it from our standpoint. This is certainly not an area of expertise for me, I mean.
Can I make one clarification? Sorry, I don't mean to cut anyone off.
Sure, go ahead.
This is okay, fine. I just want to clarify that the points that I had emailed to Marlene, those are, those are purely suggestions. The, the CR does not specify any details about the right of way. Kestrel is acknowledging that the right of way exists. They legally have that right of way. And those, those bullet points about, you know, no more than 20 feet wide, try not to take down trees or destroy vegetation, keep the right of way where it is, those are just suggestions, because our interest in the property is protecting the conservation values of the property, which we assume are also the interest of the town, at least of the Town Conservation Commission, which is why I sort of just threw those out there in an email. But they're, we're flexible. Whatever, whatever the town, specifically the Conservation Commission determines is an appropriate way for them to improve this right of way, Kestrel would very likely go along with that. So I just want to make sure that everyone understood, like, those are not, you know, laws or something that I.
Okay, so if there was perhaps one tree that was holding it up, okay.
There's one tree, like, we can work with that, yes.
Okay.
I was just suggesting that, you know, if they're gonna change it and make, which they're not, if they're gonna make 100 foot wide right of way, like, that's probably gonna be an issue. But whether it's 12 feet or 15 or 20 or 22, like, that's, that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's complicated. Legal counsel needs to look at this from, for, so from our perspective.
I would, I would think so, yeah.
I mean, I guess, I'd like to hear what, I understand what you're saying about conservation. It's really the wetlands up in the back, but still, they've asked us to give them.
Well, it's wetlands at the road, too.
At the road, okay. And then, so the determination from Conservation Commission. And then I, I don't know how you two feel, but I, I am not comfortable making any decisions until town council can look at this.
I had anticipated the board would want town council, you know, and then. I had anticipated the board would want Town Council, you know, and then weigh in.
You know, with ongoing conversations to the departments that have interest in this, like, the chief, like Kyle, like the DPW.
With the right of way, it's just to clarify, there's wetlands on both sides.
Okay.
So that's, you know, if we're going to widen it, it's, then the Conservation Committee then has to, you know what I mean, be okay with it or not? I don't know. What they're going to come up with, but yeah.
Fire chief is okay with it. We can pick a happy medium, widen as much as possible, because there are wetlands in that buffer zone. Let's say if we can do 15 feet, you know, fire truck will be able to pass. And then if we need to make our personal driveway where the house is, if they need to do like a three-point turn, back it out, you know, we can also accommodate that once we get all the building and blueprints and-
And I mean, another, that's, that's great. And hopefully, we can just find a compromise that works for everybody. But, you know, also, a question for counsel is then, there's, really, there's three lots up there. So what does that, what would be the next, right? What, what could we anticipate potentially being the next request up in that area? And that's an important consideration as we look at all of this. What, what could be, you know, so that's something I, I think-
Yeah.
Counsel would need to look at. That's, you know, we have to, we as the town have to look at that as we're, it's not just this one isolated issue if there's three lots up there that have been sharing this, so.
Yep. I mean, I understand that. And also, just to kind of clarify, if we improve the paper part of Old Stage Road, then that also, like, that's not, that frontage is not real frontage, because that's, that's all wetlands. So then you're just asking us to destroy environment. Do you know what I mean?
I understand.
So it's just, I don't think that's going to be a solution at all.
Okay.
Now, if we are moving forward with this, let's say, by the next meeting, we decide, we are getting a permit from Conservation this or from Building Department? That's also a question.
Well, we have to have a determination from Town Council first, and then we, then there'd be the next steps.
Yeah, so we, board should have information from the Conservation Commission and from Town Council.
Right.
By, by the-
Right, our town attorney.
Yep.
Right. So, it's complicated.
I noticed. Doesn't it have to be?
Well, that's how things work at this table, unfortunately. So, well, you know, we, we are here, our obligation is to look out for the town's interests and also make sure that we're abiding by restrictions and all of that. And then to make sure that, you know, we are allowing development in a way that is safe to get emergency vehicles up and everything. So we have obligations that we have to fulfill. And, and I just feel like our town attorney needs to take a look at all of this.
So are we tabling this on the next meeting, or what's the plan going forward?
I mean, hopefully, next meeting, we can take it up again. It's going to determine, it's going to depend on what counsel, you know, I can't, I can't predict how long it might take him to look at this, how much he might, other information he might need. He's very thorough.
I don't know how much time he'll need. I don't know what his schedule is, but, you know, I can hope for the best.
We will, we will not unnecessarily delay it. We will try to get it, determinations as soon as possible. We understand that you want to get going.
How will we be notified once we're ready to proceed in the next step?
Well, we, we have to, you know, tie up the agenda, at least. We're working on it a couple of weeks in advance of the meeting. So either Karen or I will be in touch with you and let you know whether, you know, we'll confirm with you whether the topic will be on.
And I, I can assume that when we ask counsel to review it, he might be able to give us an, an estimate of when he might, you know, so if, if reasonably, he says he just can't do it by the next meeting, we'd let you know, and we'd, you know, but we'll, we're, we will try not to, you know, delay it too much. But we do have to do our due diligence on our end.
And we want you by any means. That's why we're here.
Yes. So-
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stu.
Yes, thank you, Stu.
Thank you.
No problem, yeah. Thanks for setting up the virtual meeting. So let me know if anything comes of this that you need my help on.
I'm assuming counsel could reach out to Stu with particular questions.
Yeah. You're okay with that? Yeah, okay.
Marlene has all my contact info.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Good night. Bye-bye.
Good night.
Okay, so her next order of business is we have some, some resignations as well as an appointment. So we have received a resignation from Karen Karowski from the Board of Registars. So we will need to vote to accept that, correct?
Yes.
So I'll take a motion to accept that resignation.
Make a motion to accept the resignation with regret, and please send the letter of thank you.
A second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we also have a request to appoint Barry LeBay to the Board of Registars. Barry is from 40 School Street. So Elena has given us a, an appointment form for him.
For the board to approve, yeah, yeah, to vote.
Make a motion to appoint Barry LeBay to the Board of-
A second.
And registers.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's great. It's nice that Barry has stepped up. Very kind man. Okay, and so DPW report, Phil was not able to attend tonight. Did you want to, do you want to, we want to defer that, or do you, can you speak to these?
I can brief, oh, well, yes, I can, I can speak to both of them. But briefly, the wastewater plant improvement upgrades. So the town had applied for a USDA grant for the wastewater plant improvements project or upgrades, and that is the $12 million project that the town authorized last year, I believe. We were applying for a grant, you know, we were holding out that maybe, you know, we might be able to get a 40% grant. But, you know, Dave Priggett, the engineer that the town's working with, had, had felt comfortable that it was more likely to be 20%. But anyway, they have had a second round of funding, and they have, they're offering a loan to the town and a grant, so the grant and a combination grant loan. The grant is for 20% and I thought we had that information in here, but maybe-
Is it this, the USDA?
Yes, it is. I do have it here. So the, the loan would be for $9,491,000, the grant $2,406,000, and then the town would pay $132,000. So the town, I have not received the award, letter of award, which I am anticipating any, any time. And the town will be required to vote the acceptance of, of that award. And other documents will have to be approved. So it'll be, you know, to finance the loan and then accept the grant. So that's just a summary of the notification we received from the town to accept that. And I expect that at the board's October 5 meeting, you'll have those documents to-
Well, that's good news.
To set everything in motion, yeah.
So this is actually good news, because before we, we were told that we might not get it.
So, yes, the first round-
And now we're back being told that we are going to get it. So $2 million grant is sort of nice.
The first round, they were offering it all in, in the form of a loan, right? But we decided to hold off and wait and see if there would be additional funding. In other words, the second round, which there, there was. And we were fortunate to-
That's great.
$2.4 million is-
That's very helpful.
Yeah, very helpful, on that very large project, so. So there's no action we need to take tonight. That's just an update on that.
Correct, correct. The next item is, actually, this is an extension of a request that had been made to carry over unused vacation time. The DPW director has provided some additional detail to the board as requested, you know, for his reasons, to carry over the vacation time.
So he allowed, he gives more clarity on, on why he needed to do it. And then he also clearly spells out a plan to use it quickly so that we don't continue to have this problem. So I appreciate that clarification. I'm, I'm fine with the request. I don't know how you guys feel.
No, I'm, I'm happy we got the clarification that we wanted.
Yes.
And I think at the last meeting, you made a motion to make sure that there's no more carryover. Carryovers after 2024, right at the end of next year.
Yeah, I don't know if we took a vote. I know we talked about it.
Was that a vote or not?
I don't recall.
I don't think it was a vote.
I'd have to look back at the meeting minutes. I know that it was stated that no more after this year.
I mean, I think it should just be sort of a general directive, that unless there's like extremely extenuating circumstances-
Our policy says.
That, you know, we, we're not going to really entertain carryovers. This is all still trying to clear out, you know, we did carryovers during COVID because it just made sense, people couldn't go anywhere and whatever, but it's still, we, I think we, to your point, Ed, we're trying to sort of-
Right.
Clean that up. I mean, we-
We encourage our, our employees to take their vacations so they can get rest and do good. And we don't want a lot of hours that we have to pay out at the end of their, when they finally retire.
Right, or these extended time off that we've experienced that then create a problem within the department. So I think the directive from the board is that while we will always want the wiggle room to entertain these under extreme circumstances or very, you know, unexpected sort of circumstances, and those things certainly can arise, this is not going to be a regular, common practice from year to year. And we just want employees to be aware of that. Because you're right, Ed, people do need to take their time.
Right. So I'll make a motion to accept the carryover from Phil.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. So next is the consultant agreement, the renewal with Colonial Power Group for management of the municipal electricity aggregation program.
Right.
We've already discussed all of this, right?
And this is a renewal, this is a renewal agreement.
And so this is just a formality tonight?
Right, this is just the renewal agreement with Colonial Power. It's not with a supplier. We'll be, you know, looking at, at rates, because the current electricity aggregation rate expires the end of December. So I'll be working with Colonial Power over the next several weeks to-
Okay.
Look at those new rates.
Okay.
This is separate from that. So I just asked the board to vote to approve the renewal of the consultant agreement with Colonial Power.
I'll make a motion to approve the consultant agreement for management of the town's municipal agreement program and energy-related services.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Marlene?
Next item, animal control officer, Ed. So, you know, as the board knows, Scott Pomeroy has, has served the town well as the animal control officer for many, many years. The state is, is now requiring, it's mandated, that they complete a number of hours of training and take an exam. And, and I understand the reasons for it. So I have, I spoke with somebody at the Department of, this is through the State Department of Agriculture. Spoke with somebody there. They are offering those who are not able, if they have conflicts with going to training. Some of them, trainings are held in the eastern parts of the state. There was one held in North Hampton last week, and it's, it's too bad that Scott didn't get, wasn't able to get there. But anyway, they are offering officers to take the training and the exam on their own time. So they would be sent, Scott would be sent a video, or, yeah, a video of the training. So he would, you know, listen, listen to that and then take the exam on his own time. He just needs to get in touch with, with the representative that I talked to.
Okay, is he willing to do that?
So he, he said he will, he will try to do that. I told com, I told Scott that we'll try to accommodate him, you know, and he can use a computer here if he'd like to. The other thing I wanted to address with the board is that I don't anticipate that Scott maybe, you know, doing this much longer.
Right, that was going to be what I brought up.
Yeah. And, and so, you know, you're, you're asking the animal control officer to, you know, take these trainings, which requires them to travel. He doesn't have a very large budget to begin with, and he's paid a very minimal stipend. And, and I just feel that the Select Board and Finance Committee need to take a look at that budget. And we need to think about increasing expenses as well as how we compensate the officer.
Yeah, Scott is going to be very difficult to replace.
He will.
He has, he has given this town incredible service. I mean, for almost nothing in return. And so I do, I do know that he's, you know, probably, I'm not sure he has a timeframe for, for when he may wrap this up, but-
And I'm not suggesting, I, I guess I should say, I'm not suggesting that we wait until he's no longer the animal control officer.
No, no, no.
I think he warrants being paid, you know, quite a bit more money for what he does.
Absolutely.
But yeah, it's a $2,000 or $3,000 stipend a year.
Yeah. You're right, it does need to be discussed. I mean, do you think that we need to revisit it for a revision during this fiscal year? Or could this be something we address in the next budget cycle?
I, I, I would say the board should, should visit it this, in this fiscal year.
We should also find out how much time he really spends.
Right.
If he can give us some kind of an idea of how many hours each year that he's, he's called out or times he's called out or whatever.
And I'm sure it's quite variable. But it would be nice to have, and I, it would also be nice to know, maybe, maybe if he does have a plan for, for when he may, you know, because I don't know what our options will be when, when he's, when he leaves.
Well, you know, so Franklin County has, through the Sheriff's Department, they have a region, they provide regional animal control services, and, and I had talked to them about it. But they, they are not in a position or ready to open it up to municipalities or towns outside of, of the Franklin County area.
Tough position to fill. And, and certainly Scott has big, big shoes to fill, because he has been just great. I mean, I, I hope he'll stay on, I, you know, as long as he would like to. I know that the, this training requirement was, you know, he wasn't exactly happy that he had to do this after all these years of exceptional service in this position that the state puts this mandate on. But they have, and we just have to, yeah. So, okay, so then we should-
Maybe Scott might have somebody he recommends, maybe. I mean, we don't know, right? Maybe there's somebody that-
Well, and maybe he's, you know, still okay to do it for another year or two. I mean, I don't know what, you know, what is his timeframe really is, but it would be helpful to know that. And then, you know, maybe we should get, you know, the Finance Committee on an agenda, bring them up to speed on, on these new requirements, and, and then get them the information about what Scott's been. I mean, I personally had to call Scott a number of times for different things, not, I mean, as a Select Board member, but, you know, different things. You know, he's just always-
Yeah.
Right there, and-
Quick to respond, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I feel that, yes.
And some of these are difficult circumstances.
Yes.
Very difficult circumstances. So we should have a hand, a little bit better handle on the demands of the position so that we can then have a, you know- we should have a hand, a little bit better handle on the demands of the position so that we can then have a, you know, informed discussion about what's a more reasonable compensation.
Yes, absolutely. So yeah, anything that, you know, we can, can do to, to assist Scott with getting the training, um, because that, that is required. It has to be in
Right.
the state's system that they've completed, and it is for liability purposes.
Right.
Right.
You know, and it's, I think it's good to have him trained because even if he, um, you know, decides not to do this and we, we fill the position some other way, I mean, it might be nice to always have him here trained in case we need some kind of backup. Maybe he'd be willing to do that if, you know, because we don't, I don't know.
Uh, once Scott lets us know what his ideas are, what he wants to do, then we
Yeah.
Okay.
move in a different direction.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, moving on to continued old business, if the board's ready to do that?
Yes.
Uh, so last, the last meeting, we did not have on, on the agenda, um, discussion about the second floor and relocating the uh, the cable, cable control room, cable TV control room, I should say. And, um, you know, I know that John has some ideas for improving, improving, um, the, the control, what, what he offers as far as, you know, making it kind of multimedia center, but a control room that serves purposes for meetings, conferences, and Okay. Okay. But in order to do that anyway, we know that, you know, there will need to be some electrical, um, updates, more outlets, and, um, So I'd just like to also add that, you know, the town, and I think I reported this at the last board meeting, um, the town received its first capital payment from Comcast
Okay.
pursuant to the new agreement we have with them. So we'll re, it's 69,000 over, spread out over three years. Um, so that payment is received on or before the first of October 1st of each year. Um, so the intent is to use some of that capital money for improvements that need to be made upstairs to accommodate the control room.
What I'm proposing is to move all of HCTV upstairs and create a control room and slash studio conference center in the big room where the room is outfitted with monitors or projectors and a way to, to, or uh, go to meetings in a simplified manner, not just on this one little camera. The smaller room could be divided to make like a little vestibule and then a control room. And then the larger room would be outfitted, as I said, a studio slash meeting room. And that also made, maybe, you know, myself, uh, made so it's easy for other boards to use it as well, even if they're not being recorded, hook up their projectors like, like the comprehensive planning committee to go over everything. So it would be a, in, only the control room would be my area. The bigger room would be everybody's area. I have money in return earnings,
Retained earnings.
which is over $200,000. So funding is there. I would, I would, uh, get some preliminary plans put together and some estimates and bring it to town meeting next year and see if that money could be transferred out of returned earnings to be put upstairs to make this project happen. But we also move the control room upstairs. We can go back to being live on Channel 15 again, which we can't do now. We're only doing recorded playbacks. And I, I think it, it could be done. I mean, it could be done. The money's there, and I would get estimates and bids from professionals to do the installation. I don't think we have to do much to the infrastructure except putting maybe one divining wall up. And I envision a wall kind of maybe at an angle or an L shape to make a little vestibule outside of those double doors. So people could wait there before they go to the big room. I don't want to disturb the big, the big room at all, but I want to make it, you know, a multi-use meeting recording facility that everybody can use. Then, uh, uh, we have spoken to the Historical Commission, and they are not interested in putting a museum out there.
Well, that was going to be my question.
The historical
That's the, that's the back and forth, right?
Right, so
The Historical Commission has, has, has a few members I've talked to.
Olson-Beldon.
Yeah.
Beldon-Olson.
Yeah. And they have said that they don't have any interest in, in using that. Um, you know, they're, I know they're, what they're interested is in finding a building.
You're the second floor guy.
Okay, on the second floor. I mean, again, I want people to know if you walk through this building downstairs, you got the cellar space, you got the COA fixed up, that, that space is small. It's, it's, it would take a lot of work. Up here, you have behind here the balcony, which would take a lot of work to convert. Upstairs, you have the small room and the bedroom. The small room, I like the idea, part of it being for the studio, the other part being for another use, and we have the meeting room upstairs. I do like the idea of some monitors and overhead projectors to bring us up into the 24th century, I guess. Uh, but, I mean, I, I've been sort of pushing it in that direction. And I do want you to know that, uh, the facts from John are the separate, the fund balance in the, in his account for is 293,224 dollars. That's in that account, and that's separate from
That's the fund balance currently. It's 293,000 dollars. That's separate from his operating budget.
And so that's his operating budget.
Includes the money he gets.
Yeah, so, I mean
Right.
contract. So we'll have another 60,000, 69,000?
Right. So we, we receive, as I had explained to Ed, the, the town receives quarterly payments, the franchise fee.
I'll talk about the capital money.
Right, but in addition to, so all of that money the town receives, the franchise fee and the subscribers fee, in addition to the capital, goes into the enterprise fund. So just the, the 23,000 that we already received for the capital payment will go into, so that 293 that I gave you is the current fund balance for that 23,000 because we just received that. That hasn't been posted yet.
I do want to point out, we, there's money there.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing I asked John was to make sure Kyle okays any walls or anything upstairs because I don't want to go through having to move sprinklers or smoke detectors.
Right.
And there, upstairs, there is, there is some electrical that needs to be updated that wasn't under this building when they updated this building's electrical. There's some, there's actually a couple of receptacles that are ungrounded. I don't know if they were disconnected or if they're still used, but those, those either way have to be removed and replaced anyways.
And I have the funding, so if it's a combined use, all the money can come out of mine. That means HVAC, electrical, whatever else is required.
Right. And so then, that space would then become, would then become our meeting space, the school committee.
We would still have this meeting space as well, but up there.
Be the, the televised space.
Yeah.
And
We're running into problems with other boards and committees wanting to use this space.
I know.
We're utilizing space downstairs. I have to ask the Council on Aging, um, if we can utilize their library area and, and dining room for, for meetings.
I know sometimes there's, you know, we're here and Recreation is trying to meet and other, you know, committees and whatever, so space can be limited. So it would create a little, yeah. I mean, I love the idea of the upgrade to the technology so that, and I, when I, when I think about the benefit of that, I, you know, my mind goes right to the budget meetings, which, you know, it would be so much easier, I think, for townspeople to follow along if we had better technology. Um, because it, it can be
It becomes challenging.
It can be challenging. Um, so, I mean, I, especially if, I mean, the, you know, the, what, the roadblock we kept running into is that, you know, there was other um, competing interests in that property, but, or that space, excuse me, but if you're saying that they're now saying they don't want it, then that, this seems like, why on earth would we not move forward with a project that in, increases our ability to inform residents and connect with residents and gives you the, the space and the, um, you know, modernization that is long overdue.
And that doesn't mean I couldn't come down here and record a smaller meeting, or we could record two meetings because I
You could leave this intact.
I could leave this intact.
So you can
Well, I thought most of what you have here would go upstairs.
Well, I would bring, if there's things over the school that I would bring over the high school.
Okay. And then there may be money in that budget to replace some things or whatever, and so it would be not, I mean, that would, again, it gives greater access, right? If you now have the ability for, let's say, something like a recreation commission to, to do um, something here, then, I don't know, it's
The other thing is, I really don't have any public hours available at the high school because of security issues in the daytime.
Right.
And if there's something in the evening going on, you can't record when there's a basketball game on. So if you were somebody like Mike Cahill, who used to do his TV show, Hatfield Currents, you can't do that over there anymore. Because, you know, it's just not, not like it was 20 years ago. The studio with smack dab in middle school, it's not laying in the back in the corner anymore where you could come in the back door and not
Right.
have to interface with that.
Right.
Was it really that many years ago?
There's been a lot of, you know, iterations of this, you know, John, John's been flexible and has sort of rolled with the punches over the years. I mean, we used to broadcast from the library
Yes.
at Smith Academy. When I was on the board before,
I remember.
all our meetings were there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so.
Plus, I think it'd be nice to have that meeting room back upstairs in the bigger room where we can accommodate
Yeah, this is, um, yeah.
It gets crowded in here.
This room, you get 20 people in here, it's crowded. Uh, and you don't see it as much in your meetings unless it's something about the Blue Five project. But, uh, Planning Board, I would say, three out of four of those meetings will have a substantial amount of
Right, of course. There's a lot of interest in, yeah, in what they're doing. I would say school committee meetings probably pretty well attended as well. No?
No.
Oh.
It'd be nice to go back, having meetings up there again. I always enjoyed that room for meetings.
I've never used that room for meetings.
When I worked for the town previously, the Planning Board used to hold their meetings up there. Then we were told that we could not hold meetings up there because it was not handicap accessible.
Well, which has been fixed now because
Right.
They have cups, kind of functions up there.
We used to have town parties up there.
Yeah, that was, I believe that was referred to as the community room way back.
I don't know. We used to have like the, when I worked for the town, this goes way back, that was where we had like holiday parties and
Yes, there were parties up there, lunches, yeah. And book club would, would meet up there.
Yep. It's a nice space, you know, nice space. So, so what do we have to do to move forward with this?
I guess you just basically have to say you have permission to proceed with
Yeah, we will have to appropriate the money. Um, once free cash is certified, water sewer and, and cable enterprise, um, retained earnings are certified, then we can, um, vote to authorize expending the money for the project.
But I can do the preliminary work.
I was just gonna say, some work could be done this year from your budget.
As I was talking more earlier, I don't, wouldn't envision moving out of the high school until after school's out of session, so not to disturb
Right.
and have Comcast.
So this isn't going to happen anytime soon. So maybe we
The bulk of it would be, yeah, next year.
Fiscal year, we'd start broadcasting from upstairs. I mean, do you need to, do we have to vote it tonight, or, I mean
No, I, I think as long as, you know, we, I think, you know, for, for John and I, if the board supports this, um, you know, if you just give the thumbs up, you, you support moving forward.
If you're comfortable that
Yeah.
the issue with the space for the historical artifacts has gone away, that was the only issue that kept cropping up when this was discussed.
And we would just need to, you know, what we would do is consult with, um, oh, we're still taking a look. I'm telling you, that balcony up there, so, you know, we, someone else, Kyle had referred us to somebody else, as I had mentioned at a previous meeting, you know, trying to get a structural engineer here to just tell us what needs to be done up there.
Does that, does that issue go away, though, if we don't want to store things up there? If we're not using, I thought the issue with this balcony was the weight of the artifacts that were going to be stored up there.
So we would like to level it, and what would we need to do to use it, to level it, to be able to use it?
Basically, we are, we just wanted to know what needed to be done.
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't decide to do anything with it. Just wanted to know if, if we wanted to move forward with storing stuff or using for another space, what would be the cost of doing it?
That
But there was no decision on the use of that space or
It would be ideal for storage. It really would to, you know, put filing cabinets up there and
Okay, so then you're still talking about weight issues up and down.
Yes, you would be talking about that still.
Okay, but this could move forward without
What, John, yeah, what needs to be done, that would, that's separate from, from the balcony.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, he, he has some money in his expense line that he could, could tap into for some work. But the bulk of it would be, um,
Right, because we have
money that we need to vote on.
Mm-hmm.
Because they have to move the fire.
Right.
Right, and the new, uh, renewal agreement references relocating the studio.
I'm sure the school would be happy to have this moved out.
Well, I don't think you have too much space left.
No.
Was that the old music room in the center of the?
I have about a third.
Mm-hmm.
It was the music room, right?
Yes.
It's that interior room across from
Yes.
I was moved there when they decided to expand where the studio was into the new band area. So I was in the old band room.
Right.
And we spent $25,000 to put two walls up.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And after the two walls were up, the studio area became a storage area. And the control room is the control room. So I've never really was able to turn it into an operating studio.
John, didn't, uh, last year or the year before, I thought they had decided to utilize half of that room for classroom space, no? So it's being used now for storage. Okay.
Or do, I mean, we want it on record, I, I could make a motion to allow John to proceed with using that small room.
Yeah, that certainly isn't going to hurt. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I make a motion to allow John to use the small room to help him work with his plan and
Move forward on the complete project.
And then get back to us.
Yeah, I'll submit, you know, finalize ideas at cost.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Progress.
Thank you. Yes, it is progress. All right. Human resource policies, um, the draft, uh, dress code policy that you had reviewed, um, at your previous meeting has been reviewed by town council. Um, just want to note that when, um, town council reviewed this, he had suggested that we, um, talk with the, uh, union, the Teamsters Union.
Okay.
And, um, so although, you know, the, the labor's, uh, unit has, has their own, um, agreement. Um, but anyway, I spoke with the Teamsters Union President, Brian Donovan, and he, uh, just pretty much thanked um, the town for corresponding with him, and he said, the only application to the Teamster members is number four, item number four of the general guidelines. This doesn't appear to pose a problem issue with the collective bargaining agreement. So
Right.
they're comfortable with this.
Okay.
So, you know, as town, as I said, town council is a courtesy. It suggested that we
Right.
talk to them. So town council has made talk to them. So Town Council has made some recommended changes in, in the draft that you have.
I'm fine with it.
So if the board is, yeah, comfortable with this, you can vote to adopt this policy and it will be added to the HR manual.
I make a motion to approve the dress code policy. Second.
A motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, day pond project update. So the board was, uh, you know, updated previously that we had received the report from, from the Environmental Engineering Company and last week, yeah, last, was it last week? Or earlier this week? I can't even remember. Um, so Ed was at the meeting, myself with, uh, John Wilks, Senior, who is Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, and Rich Abbott from Open Space, and Brian Nicholas was, was there and a huge help, um, you know, or guidance to, to the group. Um, he contributed to the meeting discussion. Did I miss anybody with that with zip?
Um, Mike Zish was also there.
Oh, Mike Zish, who's also with fishing, with the town's fishing, fishing game.
Right.
And is Brian, Brian's a member of Fishing Game as well?
He's also a member of Fishing Game, yes.
And of course, he understands all that technical, you know,
Right.
component, the technical components of the report. Um, so going forward, the, the Community Preservation Commission, you know, would support the town moving forward with, you know, other, other work, extended work, um, possibly dredging. And, I mean, that's what we're looking at. It was suggested that a survey of the pond be completed, and I'm going to get a quote for that. Um, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, we're, we're sure of what we're surveying, so I'm going to talk with Brian Nicholas about that. Actually, John Wilks is in my office today, um, and we talked about it a little bit. Um, so the intent would be for the town to submit, uh, an application to the Community Preservation Commission the end of this year, and with, with the idea to move forward with reclamation of, of the pond, which would include dredging. And, um, we're also looking, Ed had a great idea of adding a, a walkway. So at that discussion we had last week, it was suggested to maybe add onto the existing walking path at the school. Um, and so then you'd build off of, of that and continue the walkway to the pond. We're still talking about using it for ice skating, fishing, um, what else?
Really a nice little spot. And then, what, I'm sorry, didn't you suggest also accessing it through, from Kapewong?
Kapewong, that's right.
There was one idea if people liked it, they'd go from Kapewong to the pond and then the Smith Academy, where, I mean, we have trails up in the mountains for a lot of people. This would give Kapewong senior citizens a, a chance for a small trail to go and sit at the pond, feed the ducks, go to Smith Academy games, if, if that's what everybody wants to go forward with.
That'd be nice. That'd be really nice.
But it's not going to be, it's going, it might be reclassified as a pond restoration
Restoration.
program. And so the next, it's little baby steps. The next step would possibly look at, uh, cost of a survey and see, and Community Preservation
Yeah.
is on board with getting some more
So depending on the cost of the survey, we might be able to have that done in this fiscal year. Um, but then the application that would be submitted to CPC would be for the
Right, and that's, and it would be using community preservation funds to execute the project.
Right.
What's great with Brian Nicholas, he's worked with projects that involve wetlands and DEP and other, uh,
Endangered species.
So he's, he's going to be great with helping guide, uh, this project, hopefully, and see what happens and whether it gets finally finalized or not.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's such a nice space and probably sort of an untapped resource
Yeah.
in town, so
Rich Abbott speaking for Open Space, you know, he, he supports the idea of
Yeah.
additional work and
I mean, where it's located too, so close to the school, so close to Kapewong, uh, in an area where a lot of people do walking and, you know, it really would be such a
We want to make sure that the school is on board with this, and I'm meeting with the school superintendent tomorrow morning and
Because now the school has a fly fishing club.
Yes, that was, that was the other activity. I knew I was missing one.
What would you really do in that little pond?
I guess it's become part of their curriculum.
You can practice.
It's become part of their curriculum.
You can practice the fly fishing. You're not going to probably catch it.
For teaching, and then they actually had videos, the school fly fishing club was below the dam doing fly fishing, so
Yeah.
Wow.
So there's, there's a lot of different options, and there's really no other place. And I found out the pond is over 100 years old, right? Dates back to the 1800s.
Someone mentioned that. I was quite surprised.
Ice skating would be so
Yeah.
fun. That would be, not for me, but for other people. I mean, that would be really, um, that'd be really nice.
Hmm.
Nice little feature. Yeah.
So hopefully, we, hopefully this is another project that can, we can keep moving forward with.
So between now and, and the end of the year, we'll be working on putting that application together and generating letters of support. You know, Open Space, I'm sure will send a letter to the school. And, um, I, I expect that the, the application will be on behalf of the Select Board, Select Board's application.
Well, I just want to, I always appreciate Ed, Ed's like the project man. You're so good about
He is.
staying on top of these, all these projects.
He's trying to get all the pieces together. Every project is trying to get the right pieces together.
You're very good at it, and we appreciate it.
In order.
Appreciate it.
And for that pond project, Brian Nicholas is going to be
Yeah.
Yeah.
the best thing that happened to that project.
It was, it was a, it's a good meeting.
You know, it's nice that, you know, there's so many different people we can tap in town for so many, for all different things that we're, you know, we're lucky that way.
This town is well gifted with a lot of people, with a lot of different backgrounds
Those have been my thoughts right along. It, it just surprises me, the people that
It's, it's really not knowing anything, it's just knowing the right people that can give you the right answers.
Yeah, that's right.
So
That's our motto here at the Select Board. We don't really need to know anything.
Just find the right people to give you the right answers. Well, all your, all your CEOs, they always say surround yourself with good people and get out of their way, so
Right, yeah.
Exactly. Okay, well, that was a pretty good meeting. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll make a
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Karen, thank you. John, thank you. Marlene, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I left my house.